Okay, let's bring our meeting to order.
Commissioner Murdock.
Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did we start too soon?
It'll work.
Okay. The, uh, this meeting is a public meeting. If you look around, we're really fortunate to have a room like this to meet in. I met last night in the Willow County Board of Commissioners' room, and it is a disaster. So, they're getting about $2 million to remodel it, but, uh, they've converted the jail to offices and, and they moved the jail, but it, uh, you're walking over pieces of wood and debris and, and saws and the extension cord, so we're really pretty lucky.
Well, this is the department that built it, so that's a good thing.
Yes. All right. So, just that.
And just to remember, this was for only assessment purposes.
Let no one forget.
So, we got rid of the cord, saws, and all that kind of stuff. Okay, moving on. Awards and recognitions. Commissioner Murdock.
Okay, we have a bit of a surprise this morning. We're taking time to celebrate a very special occasion. Uh, it's hard to think about the Stafford-Hansel Building and not think about Israel because the two are synonymous. The courthouse in Hermiston is set up a bit differently than the courthouse in Pendleton, so the only constant in terms of overseeing that facility is the presence of Israel on the main floor. As Court Security Officer Roy Drago noted in suggesting Israel be honored, I truly believe he is the only person in the Stafford-Hansel Building that cannot be replaced. He is known here as Mr. Do-It and Mr. Fix-It. While our maintenance staff gets to Hermiston for regular maintenance projects on snowy mornings in addition to opening the building, Israel gets to make sure the walks are cleared and safe. He handles all traffic coming and going in the building, supports county officials who are working in the building, and handles patron requests for county services. This list could go on, but while Israel does all these things willingly and skillfully, it is his personality and general presence that set him very much apart. In short, he does everything we could possibly hope for in presenting a positive image for Yumitila County. I know Israel would like me to go on and on and on in great detail. Let me stop here and point out the milestone in his life that is part of this celebration. Last month, Israel became a U.S. citizen. As I noted earlier, Israel is everything we could hope for in terms of a model representative of our county. Let me now add to that, Israel is also everything we could hope for as a model U.S. citizen. Israel, we thank you for your 11 years of service to Yumitila County, and we applaud you for your most recent accomplishment. Yumitila County is very, very proud of its diversity, and we are pleased you are part of our family. And you can look around and see your family. If you had come up, I have a certificate of achievement and a copy of my comments signed by all three commissioners.
All right, I think it's in focus. One more. I want to say one more thing, too. Israel doesn't, he also exemplifies dedication to the job. There's not very many employees that are willing to go through the lengths of being arrested almost for doing their job duties. We also employed Israel to pick up our ballots, and he was trying to clean out the ballot sheet one time, and the cops were called. They thought he was stealing ballots. Ballot sheet, so he had to call me, and I had to, uh, explain that, no, he's one of our workers, and that's why he has the name tag. But also, we do marriage licenses. He started doing that down in Hermiston. We wanted to do, he asked about passports, and we said, well, you have to be a citizen. And dedication, I think that might be one of the things, too, he says, well, I'll go and become a citizen, and so I can do, do more here. With that, though, now that you're a citizen, you're also able to vote in this country. Here is a voter registration card. You just need to check what party you want to be a member of or no party.
If you want help, I'll help you.
A lady's putting together a little pen here to put on your refrigerator that says you voted. There's some stickers to go along with that, too, so. Yep, we can put those in there. Thank you, Israel. Thank you.
Congratulations, Israel.
Also, apologies to Jolene, since there was an indication she was being honored this morning, which brought Israel from Hermiston, so apologies, Jolene. We still love you.
Do we have any other awards or recognition?
Well, you might tell them they're welcome to stay, but they don't have to.
Thank you.
I think they've already decided.
Wasn't that neat?
Thank you.
All right. We have minutes from August the 16th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of August 16, 2017.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, uh, do we have any other additions to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add one. I would like to acknowledge, formal acknowledgement of the service of Dale and Paul as members of the City Council, and I'll make a motion to that effect. Can I do that, counsel?
I would second it.
No, not yet.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought we were moving ahead and taking it off the agenda.
Yeah, no, you can certainly do that. Uh, where do you want that? At the very end of our agenda?
Nine, is that nine, all right?
Yeah. Okay, this is a point and place on the agenda for public input and recognition of visitors. If you are not already on the agenda for any purpose, we have the agenda listed up on our screens. Are there any visitors that want to address the Board of Commissioners this morning? All right, let's move right on. Our first item of business is a land use hearing, and this is an application by the Oregon Department of Transportation for the pit at Meacham. As Chair of the Board, I will go ahead at this time and open the hearing. The public hearing is for a text amendment, number T-16-068. It's a plan amendment, number P-117-16, and zone map amendment, Z-309-16, and variance, This application was submitted by the Oregon Department of Transportation, and the standards for approval are found in Oregon Admin Rules 660-023-040 through -50, 660-23-0180, subpar gap 3, 5, and 7, and the Yumitila County Development Code, 152.487-488. At this time, I'm going to ask for our staff report, and Bob, I'm assuming you're doing that?
I am. Okay? Thank you, Commissioner Bob Walder, Planning Director. So, this application is for Oregon Department of Transportation.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. They're looking to expand the aggregate resource overlay zone at the Meacham Quarry. Currently, the existing quarry consists of 35.7 acres of Gulf Five-protected resource, and this expansion would add approximately 19 acres to that. But that, it's also located over an existing quarry, it just hasn't had, received that Gulf Five protection. As you read Commissioner Givens, the, the County Development Code hasn't been updated for the Division 23 rules for aggregate, so we follow the Oregon Administrative Rules to establish a large Gulf Five significant site. Previous hearings, the Planning Commission met August 24th and recommended to approve the amendments as well as the variance. As you note in the findings, the applicants requesting a variance to alleviate the 1,000-foot setback requirement required for a forest residential zone, which is located east of the quarry. There's a map in your packets if you'd like to see that. At the Planning Commission hearing, they did recommend several conditions, and I'll address those here. They asked that we add a condition that ODOT is required to install a "no firearms activity" sign at the entrance to the quarry to protect the public from the shooting of firearms. In addition, they asked that ODOT be required to comply with Yumitila County weed management ordinances. And then finally, they wanted to make sure that they would adhere to DEQ permits for air, noise, water quality issues, et cetera. And so those conditions were added to the, these final findings for you today. I believe the applicant's here, so I, unless there's any questions, we can move on to testimony.
Okay, do I have questions from my fellow commissioners?
Bob, just one thing, for the benefit of those who may be reading the record and, and for those who may be tuning into the, to the video broadcast, can you state what Gulf Five is?
Yeah, so Gulf Five is basically, it's for the natural resources element of the statewide planning program, and so it would offer protection to protecting this Gulf Five resource, which is a rock quarry. So, it protects it into the future.
Thank you.
And the rock quarry being one of our resource lands. Okay, at this time, those that are going to testify in favor, I'll call on first. Those that will want to testify in opposition, I'll call on next, and then that will give the proponents a chance for rebuttal. Also, with my colleagues, is there anyone who wants to declare conflict or ex parte communication?
Not I.
Okay. With that, we'll move into testimony from the proponent. And if you'd state your name and position for the record, please.
Patrick Knight, I'm with ODOT, Senior Planner. I think Bob did a pretty good job laying this out, and I don't really have any formal presentation, more here to answer questions, if there are any, try to address those.
Okay, questions?
One question. The, the operation's been working for many, many years, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Have there been any problems with it from the standpoint of dust or blasting or any of that, anything of that nature with any of the neighbors or any other agency?
I'm not aware of any. Usually, we try to be a good neighbor and work around that stuff and such, but I'm not aware of any complaints.
And I am assuming you're coordinating, or ODOT's coordinating with Oregon Department of Geology and Mineral Industries on it?
Yeah, both with Doug Ami and DEQ are requirements for us to do that, anyway.
Okay, great.
Looks like you're awfully close to the city of Meacham, and I would suspect if there were major problems, someone would be here.
Yeah, and the quarry's been there a really long time, so I think most people are, are aware of it already.
It looks like almost adjacent to the community.
Real close, yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have anyone wishing to testify in opposition? Okay, hearing none, other state agencies? All right, with that, I am going to close the public portion of this hearing deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, I read the documents pretty, pretty thoroughly, and it appears to be a pretty straightforward request for a operation that's been in existence for a good, long time, merely an expansion of that. Noted in the Planning Commission meeting, there were no, there was no opposition at that point either, so, uh, I would be supportive of this.
Was that a motion?
I'll make the motion that, uh...
You did close the hearing, I trust?
Yes. In the matter of amending comprehensive plan and adding site to look to Gulf Five aggregate resources inventory for State of Oregon, ODOT, for the Meacham Quarry expansion, I move approval of ordinance 201-7-13.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And we just need one motion for all those different...
Right. Well, I think maybe just to be safe, maybe you might want to just approve the application in full, so that way...
Okay.
So, move in case there's something...
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded, also that we approve the application in full, including all the, uh, evidence and testimony. All of them in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The burn ban, uh, Robert, Bob, did, did you want to stay at all for the burn ban portion?
I was, I was gonna visit with...
Okay, great. We'll, we'll come back to that. We'll come back to that in a minute. The creation, then, we'll come back to the, the burn ban after Bob comes back. The jail position, who is presenting that?
Lieutenant Hearn.
So, we want to create a position...
We don't know who you are. You have, no, you formally have to identify yourself.
We want to create a corrections service specialist position at the county jail. Person would be responsible for doing classes, doing assessments, and getting people set up for alternative forms of custody outside drug and alcohol treatment. We do plan on, Lipsec is, is, we're working with Community Corrections to get a grant, and all the money that we spend on this will be reimbursed.
Okay, questions?
What percent of the population would you say this would, this would impact?
Uh, the target population is the 1145 inmates, which is, we've got 28 of them.
Morning Commissioners, Dale Primmer, Director of Yumitila County Community Justice. This is a continuation of the conversation we have had as it relates to justice reinvestment planning. We've, this is, this is a position that existed last biennium that expired with the, the closing of the justice reinvestment grant in June of this year. The jail has been interested in maintaining that program and those services and have carved out some, some money that they've got to bridge the gap until the justice reinvestment grants are reviewed and approved October or November. As Thorn said, we're, we're, our primary target population is, with this position, is to, to identify the 1145 population. So, 1145 means the people who are serving felony sentences in the county jail for a period of less than one year. Primarily, these are people who are on, or were on probation that have had that probation revoked due to poor compliance in the community. The, the intent is to have somebody in the jail who is delivering services for that population, delivering group services that target cognitive behavioral therapy as well as motivation, and coordinates post-release services, so by the time they get out of the jail, there's no gap or delay between release and service delivery in the community. So, that's the position. In the past, that's been a contracted position, and through some back and forth and planning with, with Stuart Harp, HR, and some of the others, you know, when you start contracting and having positions that cross departmental lines, sometimes the authority and supervision, those things get blurry. And in this particular case, where the person is, is delivering cog-based services, there's no need for a CADC, so there's no need for the sheriff's office to go outside of the organization. They can hire within, the same way that we have with Community Corrections and similar positions. So, that's what the position is, that's the position description you have. It's a position that's already in the collective bargaining agreement, so there's no need to negotiate a new classification. That's basically the gist.
And Commissioner Elfrin is the liaison to your department. Have you sat down with the liaison and had a thorough vetting and discussion of this?
Actually, this involved, I think maybe because of where it emanated from, legal counsel, myself, Dale, Captain Harp, was that the, had a lengthy conference and meeting on this.
And Commissioner Elfrin and I met earlier this week, and I discussed it at length with him then as well.
Okay, and everyone's in agreement?
Yeah, my question actually pertained to the, to the number of, of patrons in the, people in the jail who are in need of this service, and that percentage, I think, throughout the country runs rather high. And that's the reason why such programs are stepping up and, and those types of, of programs have been created in order to do that, and this just really puts us in line with that. And, uh, the more that we can, the more that we can treat those who have mental limitations, the better that we're going to be perhaps on recidivism, and the lower our costs should, should become, the less we, that we have to, to serve at the jail, the less our expense. So, that was, my question is to the percentage.
Yeah, the, the, you know, the jail runs roughly 200 people in there at any given time. Our 1145 population, the population I described to you a few moments ago, runs around 30. So, that's really the target population, although sometimes bringing these position, positions in create a capacity that can treat more than just that one population. So, while the primary target, target population is, is those 30, and yes, you might imagine, out of those 30, maybe only 20 of which are motivated or are in good enough standing within the jail to be allowed to move and to go to groups and to be an inmate worker and all the things that come along with being in programming. So, it does offer some capacity, but I'll remind you, this is, this is one of two positions we're going to be talking to you about. The justice reinvestment program approved two positions for within the jail. One, to be a direct service provider, that's this. The other one is for somebody who can do some of that clinical work, who can do the, what they call the ASAM, I forget what it stands for, but to do the alcohol and drug assessments, so they can look at proper placements. The other one, the other component of that will be somebody who does what they call psychosocial, which is a mental health evaluation for people who are in jail, where perhaps jail is not the appropriate place based on their mental condition, and that person will coordinate the releases, or you know, the, the appropriate treatment components, whether that's residential, community, with lifeways, whatever. So, that was, the approach with justice reinvestment for this particular biennium was kind of twofold. One is the direct service provider, two, close the gap between service delivery between the jail and the community, and the other one is those people who come to jail who might need a higher level of care, residential treatment, and/or are mentally ill, languish in the jail until the mental health services catch up. So, those are the two positions. I would imagine the second position, though, the sheriff probably will not have the capacity to deal with that with, with a deputy or a specialist. That will have to be somebody much more specific with special training and services, so that one will probably have to go to RFP, but we'll look toward that once the actual grant is approved.
Okay, other questions?
I would move approval.
Second? Been moved and seconded for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's jump back to number two, our burn ban. Bob, do you have anything to add on this this morning? With all this rain?
I don't. It's my understanding that it's for, in order to remove the, a non-agricultural burn ban as well.
Yes. I, I was aware, all, well, most of the forest yesterday, when I was headed for Enterprise, for the forest meeting, most of the forests were either at a moderate or a low fire danger. So, it's made a huge difference. Willow Mountains had snow. There'd been a little skip of snow in the Willow Valley, but of course, it was gone. Whopping hot temperature of 41 degrees, so, anyway, so this is for removal of the burn ban. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in the matter of lifting a temporary ban on burning in Yumitila County, I move approval of order BCC 201-7-063.
Second?
Been moved and seconded that we removed the temporary ban for both residential and, and field burning for Yumitila County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we've got the go-ahead to go out and hopefully not...
Torch it, huh?
Torch too many things.
So far, we've gotten authority to rock and burn.
The Veterans Administration reclassification, who is presenting that this morning?
Well, I'm not sure the department had, was notified. I'm not sure if she's around or available or not. I certainly can, because I participated in the conversations relative to this, working on their budget, working on their organization, and so forth, and, and met two or three times with them and signed off on it. I don't suppose they saw any need to come today, because I told, I probably told them at the time I would carry it forward. Both of our veteran services officers are now veterans. They are now certified. Our Veterans Department is being applauded by the State of Oregon for the quality of work it's, it's doing. If you will remember, it hasn't always been operated quite as smoothly as it is right now, and I think we're, we're thrilled with, with the kind of work we're doing. As I recall, in the last, everybody, in the last three years, we have raised the amount of benefits coming into the county by $6 million. So, they're, they're making a significant impact. They're maintaining an office presence in Pendleton, Milton-Freewater, and Hermiston, so all in all, I'm very, very happy with what the veterans are doing. This is a one-range movement acknowledging their certification, so I would move authorization to move forward.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. I would add, I've heard some really positive, good, positive comments about the veteran services and being able to connect with veterans out there in our...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, too often, no news is good news, and, and within the short time I've been a commissioner, four years, half of that time was spent on the other side of the coin, and so, when it wasn't going this wonderfully, so I'm happy to support this.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Public health position, are you...
I think Doug, well, it's pretty straightforward. You want me to do it? You do, go ahead. I don't have the sheet. Oh, there we go. This is a grant program that would support this position. We're hiring it based on the grant. It has to do with addressing prescription drug overdoses and prevention, and it coordinates this effort outside of our county in Yumitila, Union, Baker, and Malheur. We're happy that it comes with $95,500 in support. This request is being submitted by Alicia Southwick. I applaud Alicia for her continued good work and efforts to secure funding that helps support the Public Health Department's mission, and so I would move that we approve... And so I would move that we approve this position, but that we also tie it to the grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we support the position, but the cost to be tied to the grant, which we generally have to do anyway. But with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Well, we generally try to tie it to the grant, but I think Robert will tell you, we sometimes forget.
Okay, the next item is the post-person employment in planning. Bob, did you want to present that? We've talked about it, but give us an update.
Yeah, so as you know, we have another staff member that'll be departing at the end of this month, and he primarily did a majority of our mapping work and rural addressing. And so in an effort to alleviate some of that burden, we are asking to bring Julie Alfred, who was our cartographer for 30 years, bring her back on staff on a real limited basis, almost an as-needed type of employment. And she will be sitting back by the planners and coming in the office on certain days of the week to make maps and keep our rural addressing program moving forward. And then also, as we bring in a new staff person to replace Brandon, she will help train that person in the G I S programs that we operate.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Just kind of a side note, and maybe for an update, we're, have we sent out the notice for that position?
It's been posted.
It's posted.
Yes, the, the position for the Planner II G I S Specialist was posted yesterday.
Okay.
And so I think we're going to do the first review. I believe it's in three weeks, is what it says.
Great, thank you. And how about our economic development?
It's been posted.
Okay, great. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Questions?
No, I was asking about item seven. I thought I read this morning it was taken off.
The what? Which one?
The D A position? No.
For item seven?
Wasn't there an email this morning about the D A position?
This is to rescind the approval that was done at last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. I mistook rescind for taking off, sorry.
Okay.
When I saw that memo, at least I read your memos, Doug.
So are you presenting that, Doug?
Sure. There, there are two parts to this. Back earlier this month, on September 3rd, the board approved at the district attorney's request, some additional, an additional position and two reclassifications based on additional funding coming through their grants. It has now been, that grant request has been reviewed and discovered that it wasn't quite correct, and there will not be any additional funding to cover these changes. So the request is basically to rescind all of those earlier actions, creating the new halftime position and then reclassification the other two positions.
Okay, do you want two motions on this, or do we need to just do?
They were originally two motions, so probably best that we have them both rescinded.
All right, I would entertain one at a time then.
I would move rescinding approval given on September 6th for an additional position due to lack of funding.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the rescinding of the original position offer or creation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries in the second portion.
I move that we rescind the previous action that approved a reclassification of positions in the Umatilla County District Attorney's Office.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on the second portion of that for the review for lack of funding for those changes. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. The next is a payable for D D and public health.
Yeah, there are two separate ones referred to the Finance Department for board approval. The first one is exceeds the dollar amount to allow the department to authorize it for it. These are for the wheelchair charge equipment, and the payables to Clearview Mediation and Disability Resources in the amount of $5,250. The second one is an unusual one from the D D program. It's basically paying for respite care that normally is paid through the state, but due to some action on the part of the county, that paperwork did not get complete. So the, rather than the individual not being paid, the county itself will pay for the services.
Will that be reimbursed?
No, because we did not complete what we needed to. So this is coming out of the county, the departments.
Okay, any, any questions? Can this be done, one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I will say that the addition of the charging stations has brought positive comment. I've heard from at least two people that they've seen them, first of all, wondering what they were, and then applauding the fact that they were there.
Hopefully, nobody tried to drive their electric car in to recharge their batteries and that. All right. We're, we're ready for the additions? We voted on that?
No, we tried.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
No, we haven't, we haven't.
We didn't.
What?
I just made a comment post.
Oh, post comment, okay. So we did vote on that.
Post voting, yes.
All right. The addition to our agenda that Commissioner Murdock, you wanted on there was a recognition?
Well, we have on occasion supported, well, first of all, I'll point out that in the, in recent years, I think the county has taken a strong position, and I believe, it's been a good one, to encourage participation of our employees in both public service and community service and professional service. And I think it's both, it has been good for our, the county to have our employees so actively involved in, in those kinds of things. We expect others to do that, and even with our events on our boards and, and the things we do internally. And I think it's, it's wonderful that our, our staff members are agreeable to returning the favor throughout the state and the community. And sometimes when people have taken positions that extend over a period of time, we have actually taken action to, to support their participation so that every time something comes up, there isn't a question. So including leadership positions and so forth. So the purpose of my motion is to support the participation of Paul Chalmers and Dale Primmer as members of the Pendleton City Council that would not extend to payment of expenses, and it would not extend to situations in which compensation was provided. So with that, I make that motion.
I would second that resoundingly.
It's been moved and seconded. We recognize Dale Primmer and Paul Chalmers for their service on the Pendleton City Council and support them in a non-monetary form for that service. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
This is a reference to what's happening next week, is Dale and I will be attending the Oregon Board of Cities Conference in Portland. At the same time during that conference is the Oregon Biz meeting for the SIF agreements on the 29th. It's all a great way, so my, 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 George, without that, it's just kind of a blended environment. And just wanted to ask you to participate in that. Just say, thank you for that.
Great.
I think it's a good practice on, on major, on major duties of this kind, simply to have us formally acknowledge it, then they don't have to come running in all the time to say, can I do this or that?
All right. Did we need an executive session?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll move into our commissioner report. I'll start, George, you?
Why don't you two start, and maybe you'll stimulate something on my part.
Okay, let me start then with our, yesterday I attended the, as you know, the meeting over Enterprise with Eastern Oregon Counties Association, and most of it centered around issues with the Blue Mountain Forest Plan and the current and ongoing issues with the fires we've had this summer. Umatilla County has been very fortunate. We've had very little. Prior to my going to that meeting, I met with the Fire Review Committee with the Forest Service and trying to get, they are trying to get more support and more involvement, and even from the Fire Defense Board. With that being said, Congressman Walden met with us last evening in Enterprise at the Willow County Courthouse, and the result was to try and get more involvement from U S Fish and Wildlife, to be at the table, the National Marine Fisheries, and possibly officials with the Environmental Protection Agency. With that being said, Jim Pena, the Regional Forester out of Portland for Region Six, will be meeting with several folks, and that's still to be determined. But we will be setting up as an association, another group meeting to try and flush out and determine what most of the counties want to see in changes with the Blue Mountain Forest Plan. It was suggested that that be done before we meet again, and the next meeting with the Region Six Forester will be after the meeting to determine what we really want to see changed in that plan. It's been frustrating for the Forest Service. It's been frustrating for the congressman, his staff, because it seems to be an ongoing changing issue. The Counties Association will be meeting with Roger Lord, who has a scientific background in forest plans, and he'll be helping with that. I ask specifically for that, I also ask that Jay Sullivan, who works very closely with Congressman Walden on that plan, meet also and help determine what can be changed in that plan without creating such a firestorm on the environmental side that all it will do is create lawsuits. And so there will have to be some give and take. Willow County is very upset about the grazing issue and the travel management side of it. Union County is very concerned about the timber production side of it. Baker County is concerned about both the timber side and the aggregate, the mining side of it on, on federal lands. And Willow, or excuse me, Malheur County is concerned about the timber production. We have concerns about grazing here in Umatilla County and access to those grazing and some of the requirements for stubble height. In attendance was Union, Willow, Umatilla, Morrell County, Grant County and Harney County. We had no one from Malheur County there, but on the.
Baker County wasn't there?
Baker County was there. On the Malheur, they had sent comments. So Baker County also is concerned about control of any of our federal. We're going to have to work with some of their feelings that they want to get all federal control out of Baker County, so.
Is there a way that we could have a conversation at one of our staff meetings about a, a position for Umatilla County relative to these issues without signing on to some of this other fault or all that happens with our neighbors?
I, yeah, I, we do need to discuss that, because one of the things we found yesterday in that meeting, not one single county had the same issue. Willow County wanted us to sign on to a letter they had sent, and that doesn't fit Umatilla County's philosophy, nor did it fit with Grant County. So we're starting to see a fracturing of all the different counties, and that's why Congressman Walden said, he just kind of put his.
Head in his hands and shook his head.
And he said, you folks need to figure out what you want, and that's exactly right. You can't have 16 different philosophies included in a, a forest plan. And there is not consistency with the administration either. The new forest chief, Tony Took, wants some different ways of managing federal land. We have some district foresters, and this is not just Oregon, this is across the West, that have indicated that they're not sure how they're going to change their program. And it was pointed out that the forest district rangers in the, the Malheur on some of Harney County's ground do things much differently than the district rangers out of Willow County. One will say, sure, go ahead and, and we'll do those treatment options on, on land and timber, and even on grazing. And another district will say, absolutely not. So there's a real inconsistency, and that's creating some problems.
I think the operative term is management.
Well.
And I'm not sure that absence of management is management.
Yeah. And, and that's a difference in philosophy, too. Some don't want management, some want more, more wilderness areas, and it's a philosophy that is put out there from each of the district rangers, and now we're seeing a great inconsistency in how each district ranger operates their forest. And it's creating some real problems. I should say forest supervisors.
Mount St. Helens erupted 35 years ago. The private lands are almost ready to re-harvest.
Yes.
The federal lands still look like a moonscape, and I'm not sure why we'd want to preserve a moonscape, but just an example.
And a lot of this ends up being, we talked about the environmental side of things and the ability for those groups to stop the entire process due to court injunctions and lawsuits. And in the house side, they're working on how they can remedy some of this filing lawsuits and the costs that it's putting on agencies.
From our standpoint, I can see the congressman's frustration that we have multiple counties coming together for a meeting and multiple ideas on what to do, and some of them diverge from others. We'll get nowhere without a, without a unified voice.
That's exactly right. And they have expressed concern that the entire forest plan that's being worked on, they'll scrap it and go with the plan from 1990, which is another creation of problems in view of what society is working on now with, in each community. But the difference in. But the difference in philosophies from forest to forest is evident, totally inconsistent. Also, the difference in socioeconomic values in each of the different counties heavily involved. And it really boils down to the issue of what each county views as an economic stimulus for their county. Willow County, the economics are grazing and ranching, some logging. Union County, huge in the, the logging. Baker County is trying to bring back the logging and the mining. But again, we have environmental groups that are able to stop the whole process. So that battle goes on. I will continue to work on that with Congressman Walden and, and Jim Pena and our Eastern Oregon Counties Association groups.
Bill? So I, it's good to be post-roundup. Roundup is always a lot of fun and a major event, and it's a good chance, it's almost like a, a form of a family reunion, you see people that you haven't seen for the, for the, a long time. Now we're moving ahead. Tomorrow I speak to the Rotary Board, or the Rotary, the Realty Board in, in Boardman, that's a combination of two Realty Boards, primarily addressing the fact of the economic growth that we are seeing come and the problems that are resulting from it, specifically the, the lack of housing to house people who are going to be working in Umatilla County, and the number of people who are going to be needed in the workforce. We're short in workforce now, and how we, how we might remedy that, and transit issues to get employees to work from wherever they may be. So there's a, a number of, of different spinoff problems. Later that morning, we have a very rare opportunity to tour a, a data center at the, in Umatilla. If you did note that, that the change, the location has been changed from Boardman to Umatilla.
And that's 10 o'clock?
10:30.
10:30.
10:30 is when it's scheduled for, and we're certainly welcome to join with the congressman in doing that. Friday, I have an appointment with Lori Wyman from, from PAC Power to, number one, find out where we really are with power issues in, in, for economic development in this, in this area. There are many different points of view as to whether we have enough or don't have enough, and I want to get, go to the source and find out. So that'll be on Friday. So things are moving.
Okay. George?
I don't remember. I have a whole, the calendar's full, but I don't remember what's on it.
Okay. Robert, anything to add this morning from your?
I don't know this time, thank you.
Okay.
The cake was good.
Very good.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.